King Rock. Hello, I'm Officer Mark Scott, Police Department. You got your license registration on you?
I do.
Where are you heading from?
We're from Conway.
Okay.
We have been to BB, coming back here. I played in a pickleball tournament in Cabot today.
Okay. You got your license on you?
I do.
Okay. Are you guys staying the night here?
She is.
I am, yes.
You're going back to Conway?
Yes.
I'm staying here.
Have either one of y'all had anything to drink tonight?
I've had a beer or two.
Beer or two? You haven't had any?
That's right.
Okay.
He's had nothing.
Okay. Do you feel okay to drive? Cause you're all over the-
No, I'm here.
This is where she's staying.
I understand, but you were all over this roadway back here when I was following behind you. And he made the widest turn ever.
Well, I don't think so.
That's why I was trying to stop both of y'all, so.
Well, I'm, I was following him.
Okay, but do you okay, or you feel okay to drive?
No, I'm staying here.
You were just driving though?
Yes, she was just driving.
So do you feel okay to drive?
Yes.
I mean, yes.
Okay. Alright, do you want to do a few tests to make sure you're okay to drive?
If whatever you want to do, I am staying here.
She, she, she's fine. We're, we're fine. Don't step out. I'm, I'm good with you, sir. You, you're good. The, the truck's gonna stay here right now. Yeah, I'm okay with yourself. So front, front of my car for me. When's the, right here, front, front. I'm gonna turn off these lights.
In the front?
Yeah, yeah, right there, yeah. When's the last time you had something to drink?
Thirty minutes ago.
Thirty minutes ago?
We were in BB.
Okay.
At the VFW, at the dance. I've been in Cabot all day long. At the Senior Olympics Pickleball Tournament.
Okay.
Played late this afternoon. Went to BB, VFW.
Okay.
Danced, yes, I've had something to drink.
How much?
I mean, what do I say?
I want the, the truth.
Alright.
I'm good.
Two beers.
Okay.
Two tequilas.
Uh, one of the people, or possibly another one, I'm really interested.
When we left there, I asked him. Cause I'm playing again in the morning.
So two beers when?
I got there at nine.
Okay. So between nine and eleven, nine and now?
Yeah.
And then you had two tequilas shots?
Yes.
And then what else?
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
I am not a drinker.
Alright, so do you want to do a few tests to make sure you're okay to drive?
Whatever you want to do. I'm staying here.
Okay, alright, so, right here, stand right here, right in front of me.
Here?
Yep, and face me, face me. Do you have anything on you at all? Anything on you, like weapon wise?
No, no.
Alright, I just gotta make sure. Alright, go ahead and put your feet together, hands down to your side, just like this. Are you able to see my finger?
Yes.
Alright, you're gonna follow my finger with your eyes, your eyes only, not with your head at all. You understand that?
Yes.
Don't, don't move your head, just your eyes.
Oh, oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Don't move your head, you're moving your head still. Alright, you gotta try to-
Alright, I'm looking at you.
Just move your eyes. Gotta follow my finger, with your eyes. Don't move your head. Keep on looking out here, okay?
Okay. Not moving my head.
Yep, don't move your head. Okay, this time I'm gonna go up, okay?
Okay.
Same thing, just follow my finger. Trying to find a level ground. Let's go on the sidewalk over here.
Alright.
Now there's people watching us. Right here, that sidewalk.
This one?
Yep, right over there. He's good to go. Kind of, it's her husband. Alright, face, face that way, like you were.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, you able to imagine a line right in front of you?
I'm sorry?
Are you able to imagine a line right in front of you? Right here, on this concrete?
Yeah.
Alright, go ahead and put your left foot on that line, right foot in front, just like this, and hands down to your side. Don't start walking, just, just get in this position, just like this.
Alright, alright.
Don't touch me, don't touch me.
No, okay.
Alright.
Got it.
So you're gonna stay in this position until I tell you to do so, do you understand that?
Yes.
Alright, when I tell you to do so, you're gonna take nine heel-to-toe steps on this line, at the end of-
I'm gonna take nine?
Nine heel-to-toe steps.
Alright.
Alright, and then, at the end of your nine series of steps, you're gonna keep your lead foot on that line, take a series of small steps, and return nine heel-to-toe steps.
Alright.
Okay, so test will look like this. One, two, three, keep your lead foot on that line, take a series of small steps, turn around, one, two, three.
Alright.
Do you understand that?
Yes.
Alright, so a few points to remember, eyes down at your feet the entire time, count your steps out loud, hands down to your side the entire time, and do not stop walking until you complete the test.
Alright.
Do you understand?
Yes, I think.
Do, do you feel comfortable enough walking in those shoes?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, here we go.
Get back in that position. Right foot in front. Alright, and you may begin.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Turn around.
How I, how I explained it. How I explained it, yes ma'am.
So I turn around. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Turn around, face me. You gotta stop walking. Alright, so put your feet together, hands down to your side. Alright, so when I tell you to do so, you're gonna pick either foot, doesn't matter which one, you're gonna pick it about six inches.
You're talking fast.
Alright, either one, doesn't matter which one, you're gonna pick six feet, six inches off the ground, just like this. You're gonna count out, I mean, I heard thousands, one thousand one, one thousand two, one thousand three, and so on, until I tell you to stop.
Alright.
Do you understand all that?
I think.
Okay. Is it yes or no, not?
Yes.
Okay, so a few points to remember, eyes down at your elevated foot the entire time, you're gonna count out loud.
I'm looking down.
Yes.
Alright.
And hands down to your side, and keep legs straight and foot parallel to the ground, just like this.
Alright.
Do you understand?
Yes.
There, you can begin.
And I'm counting to-
Until I tell you to stop.
One, two, three, ugh, that's not good. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Didn't do work.
You can continue.
Alright, we're gonna do it again. You ready?
Whenever you are.
One, two, three, four, five, six-
Alright, stop. Alright, go right back in front of my car for me.
Over here?
Yeah. Alright, lay it up against my car. Yep, just lay it up against it.
Right?
Yeah. I should be good. You got something else?
It is fine, it's fine.
You ever blown up a balloon before?
No, sir.
You never blown up a balloon?
Never.
Do you have kids?
I have three sons.
Okay.
Seven grandkids.
They've never had a birthday party?
I have never, ever done this.
No, like a balloon, I'm asking a balloon. Yeah.
Oh yeah, no, I don't know that I've ever blown up a balloon for, Joe Ray, when did we have balloons at our kids' birthdays? Never.
Okay, well, you're gonna seal your lips around here and just blow into it.
Alright.
Alright, whenever you're ready. Blow, 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 there you go, stop. What does that number say for me?
I don't have my glasses.
Well, it says point one four.
Alright.
Alright, so pull that straw straight up and put that in your pocket. Just pull it straight up. There you go. Just put that in your pocket. It goes in the little thing. Alright, go ahead and turn around for me.
Pardon me?
Turn around, face my car, place your hands behind your back. We, we like your hands. So tonight you're gonna be placed under arrest for EWI, okay? And this is your husband, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm gonna allow him to park your truck after I inventory and I'll make sure nothing, nothing's else in there, okay? So we don't have to tell him. You got anything in your pockets at all?
I think not.
Is your phone in the car?
My phone is in my truck.
Okay, we're gonna have a walk back here. Nope, to my car, backseat. Just have a seat right in there for me.
That's kinda hard to do.
They don't make them for comfort, but as soon as we get up to the jail-
Well, it's not a matter of comfort, it's a matter of-
You got it, there you go. Yeah, I know, I'm gonna put the seatbelt on you, alright?
Alright.
You'll see a big police sign, or hopefully you should be able to see it. Yeah, yeah, you, you're able to move it now, I'll allow that. I appreciate it. I appreciate it. He did a huge wide turn on Rock, from coming off Rockville, and then she was driving down the same lane, I'm like-
Oh, so I'm driving up somewhere.
Yeah, and so I'm like, okay, I'm right- She said-
Okay, I was like, look at that, look at this cut off.
Oh, yeah, everyone's noticed that.
Yeah, that's, I just noticed that right now, I was like, look at that cut off.
Um, but she said that she was at BB, had a few drinks at the VFW.
Oh.
Went to Conway, had pickleball games or whatever, and went back to BB and had more drinks.
Oh, true, so she's probably been drinking all day.
Well, she, she claims that she was, only had two beers and two tequila shots, so.
Nineteen forty-eight?
Yeah.
Hopefully you find speeding here.
Yeah. Alright, Linda, I got your phone. So, so, when's we're, well, whenever we're done, we're, we'll be able to call your husband, so.
Last name's gonna be Clark, Charles Lincoln, I'm Robert King, first name's gonna be Robert, date of birth nineteen seventy-six, oh four, two-
Cabot to five twenty-five twenty-five, if you could be in route to PD, cameras are two-two, IP will be en route here to speak with y'all.
Forty-seven, what's last three to, three five straight up?
Last three, zero, one, one, zero, eleven.
Five thirty-five, Cabot, I'll be en route to the station, one female, detainee, starting mileage one, two, four, five, one, two, four, five.
Cabot, Cabot. Cabot five thirty-five, you heard me, yeah?
I copy, you ready for it?
Ready. Cabot, Cabot.
One thirteen, that's for train, two is twenty-two, one is gonna, it's starting a lot, twenty-five, so Robert Clark, other B D, confirmed.
Copy.
One thirty, it's a hobby, clear with that vehicle, out with another one. Eight zero eight zero, David Hada, eight zero eight zero, David Hada.
Eight zero, what's your name, David, on over three, this police one, PS one, twice, so let's try and make it, uh, so far, we can go, other guys, no.
Contact one, ready.
There's a one thirty, can you hold your last message?
That's right, that's one thirty.
Okay, what was the license plate I gave y'all?
Seven eight four, Tom Frank Williams.
Definitely thank you. I'll also be here at our facility, one, two, four, six, one, two, four, six. Alright, let me get the seatbelt off you real quick. There you go.
I'm telling you, these handcuffs-
I'm gonna get those off you right, right away, as soon as we get inside.
Ah, thank you.
I know, I know they're not comfortable.
No.
I'm gonna walk this way, just watch your step, this is kind of a big step, so.
Little inhibitive.
How old are ya?
How old am I?
How old are you?
I am seventy-six.
Have you ever been arrested?
I have never-
Never?
Ever, ever.
You know what they say, right?
What?
There's a first for everything.
Alright, girl.
Alright, I'm gonna help you down so you don't fall.
If you would get these handcuffs-
So it's our policy that we can't- Once you get into this room, that officer marks, he'll take those off you.
Here we go.
As long as you don't beat him up.
I'm good.
Right this way, we're going this way.
Okay.
You see that's first room right there?
I see it.
Alright, you're on face the table with a whole bunch of paperwork right there. I'm gonna get those gus off you.
Please.
Oh yeah, I told you I'd do it right away, so. Just relax your hands for me. There you go, and I have a seat right in that black chair for me.
This one?
That, that one, the, the, yeah, the one that you were about to sit on.
There's two black chairs.
Yeah.
Unbelievable to me.
You never been arrested before? No?
No.
I didn't think so, you're, the return doesn't say it, so.
I have never had anything, ever.
Not even a speeding ticket?
Not, well, years ago.
Hey.
Years ago.
Thirty-five, can you come back in here?
Thank you.
Now the dispatcher that was just in here.
I think that's what stresses me.
Can you go to my car and get my phone? It's in the center spot. What?
Is that my phone?
Yeah, it is, I can barely read the date though, but, I think I know. It's that red lettering.
Hey, did you send, where did you send?
To my car.
They're talking to a camera. Well, you could've told them to go the black way.
I don't know what they were doing. What, what's the issue? What?
I'll tell you the same thing.
Can he not walk in there?
No.
Can he not walk in there?
They were talking in the cars or something.
What?
It's, maybe it's out there.
I didn't know that part. You good?
Are you talking to me?
No, there's people walking behind you. I'm sorry, sorry to confuse you.
It's, it's fine, I'm sitting. Amazing, it's just amazing.
I wanna try to make it this as easy as I can for you, okay?
Boy, I would appreciate that. Cause I'm telling you, right now, I am... Don't even know the words. You understand, I am on the school board.
Are you? For what school district?
Conway.
Conway?
Arkansas.
Okay.
And right now, I am really wigging out.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I would understand that part.
Please do.
I, I do.
Cause this is not me.
It, I mean, it's your first time.
It's not me.
I see first time is a mistake, now you know your limit, so.
And, and-
And-
I have, I have never, ever-
Yeah, and the, good thing to, good thing tonight, no one got hurt, you're okay, everyone else is okay, truck's okay, so, um, but I'm gonna read you your Arkansas statement of the rights, okay? So I'm gonna read everything that's on this page, I'm gonna give you this blank piece of copy, you can read along with me, or you can just listen, okay? If you have any questions throughout this process, just stop me and ask, okay? I'll try to explain it the best I can. You are advised that any person who operates or in actual physical control of a motorboat or motor vehicle in this state is deemed to have given consent to one or more chemical tests of his or her breath, saliva, or urine for the purpose of determining alcohol or controlled substance content of his or her breath or blood. If the person is one, involved in an accident while operating or in actual physical control of a motorboat on the waters of the state-
Okay.
-or motor vehicle.
You need to slow down just a bit.
Okay, I'm sorry. Or two, the person is arrested for any offense arising out of the act alleged to have committed while the person was driving their boat and while intoxicated, or driving their boat while there was an alcohol concentration of point zero eight or more in the person's breath or blood. Or three, at the time, the person is arrested for driving their boat and while intoxicated, the law enforcement officer has reasonable cause to believe that the person while operating or in actual physical control of the motorboat or mo, on the waters of the state or motor vehicle is intoxicated or has an alcohol concentration of point zero eight or more in the person's breath or blood. Do you understand those three so far?
I do.
Okay, I'm gonna skip four and five because you're over twenty-one. Just barely, but-
Considerably.
If you refuse to take chemical tests, none will be given, but you will subject yourself penalties provided by law, which includes, but is not limited-
Alright, back up.
Mm-hmm.
Say that again.
If you, if you refuse to take chemical tests, none will be given, but you will subject yourself penalties provided by law, which includes, but is not limited to the suspension or revocation of driving privileges, and if you are a commercial driver license holder, the disqualification of commercial driving privileges. So, that means I'm gonna request a breath sample from you today.
But you'd already done that.
That's just a portable one, that just, that, that kind of gives me a roundabout number where you're at.
Alright.
Um, this one is most accurate thing we have, and that's why we're sitting here for twenty minutes, and I have to make sure you don't take nothing in your mouth anymore. Um, so that's, it's the most accurate scientific instrument we have available to us right at this point, okay? Now, like I said, if you don't take it, so I'm gonna request it, I won't-
I'll tell you, I'm not refusing anything.
Okay, but I, I just have to-
I'm not going down that road.
No, I just have to explain it to you, sir. So, let's just say you do refuse, then you will also be charged with an additional charge, and also your license will be suspended.
Not refusing.
Okay, perfect. Do, you do understand that though?
I do.
Okay. If you choose to take chemical tests, and the results reflect an alcohol concentration of point zero eight or more, or the presence of controlled substance or any other intoxicant, your driving- or the presence of controlled substance or any other intoxicant, your driving privileges will be suspended or revoked. And if you are a holder of commercial driver license, your commercial driver privileges will be disqualified. Do you understand that, or you want me to explain that to you?
No, what you just said is if I make this level here, my license will be suspended.
Suspended or revoked. Yeah, now.
That's pretty harsh.
Now, I, I, I'll explain more to you, but you, later on, you'll find out that you will be able to have a hearing to not get your license suspended. So, but you'll, you'll also get a temporary license right away, so.
I, I, pretty harsh, but go ahead.
Yeah. Also, I'm gonna skip the next two because you're over twenty-one.
Where is the hearing gonna be?
You have to call them, I, I think they do it over the phone for the most part, but I'm not sure where they actually do the drive, the driver control hearing.
Alright.
Is it, the, the hearing is different from your court date, so they're two separate things.
Okay.
Okay. So this one's kind of long, so if you choose to take him, or if you take the chemical test requested by law enforcement, you may also, at your own expense, have physician, registered nurse, lab technician. Hold on, I gotta finish it, so. Lab technician or any other qualified person of your choice to administer an additional chemical test. The arresting law enforcement agency will assist you in obtaining such tests. If you choose to have an additional test and are later found not guilty of the violation of DWI or BWI, or the underage DUI or BUI law for this arrest, the arresting law enforcement agency will reimburse you for the additional test. So do you understand that, or you need me to explain it? You, do you understand it?
I understand.
Alright, so, I'm gonna take this back from you. Sorry, I can use it on the next person? So, I'll just need you to initial by these three small lexuses, basically saying that you do understand. Um, and like I said, if you have any other questions, I can try to answer them. And this one right here as well.
Right here?
Yes, ma'am. And then, right here, do you understand all parts of these rights, just initial by yes or no? And, yes, yeah, no, you're good, yes is right here and no is right here, so.
So I understand?
Yeah, if you do. And then, I'm gonna request a breath sample from you today, will you take the test? And then, yes and no is right here. And then your full signature on this line right here. Alright, I'm gonna hold on to this for a minute. We'll come back to it, so. We have to wait six more minutes for this machine to calibrate and for me to make sure nothing goes in your mouth. So no drink, water, anything, so.
Oh, Lord.
How long you been on the school board for?
This is my third year and two more.
Do you have to get voted in, or how, how's that work?
You are voted in.
Okay.
And right now, I'm absolutely petrified. I taught school for twenty-five years.
What did you teach?
English.
Okay.
And I was a principal for eight.
Where at, Conway, still?
Conway.
So you, were you Conway the whole time, your whole career?
Whole career.
Wow, when did you retire, two years ago, or?
This is my fourteenth year out.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Wow, you say you retired a long time ago.
Long time ago.
What made you wanna go to the school board?
Cause I had a group of former students come to me and say, we need you to run for the school board.
Okay.
I said, no, unequivocally, no.
Yeah.
I'm doing it. And I said, come to one meeting, if you still say no, we'll leave you alone.
Yeah.
And my head was spinning after that meeting.
Really?
Spinning.
So why, why were you staying in Cabot tonight?
I played in the senior Olympics pickleball tournament in Cabot today.
Oh, so it was in Cabot?
It was in Cabot, I won the gold medal.
Wow, so, well, like the champion?
Champion.
That's pretty good, where, where at?
Cabot.
Well, like, where in Cabot?
Well, the new.
The new big, huge arena thing?
Center, yes.
I think, that, that place is huge.
And then, we, we're gonna go to BB, go dancing. And apparently I drank too much.
Did you, did you ever make it back to BB to go dancing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I was at BB.
Okay.
DFW.
So why didn't you go back to Conway from BB?
Because I'm playing again.
Oh, you're playing again tomorrow?
At eight o'clock.
Oh, okay, and you just didn't wanna wake up early, you just?
I just knew I wasn't gonna be good coming from Conway back to Cabot.
So how long did you like play pickleball for?
Today?
No, no, like all, like your whole life?
Five years.
That's it?
What do you mean that's it?
Well, you're like the champion, so I would, I would expect you to be like ten, fifteen years playing pickleball.
Cause I'm good.
Do you play by yourself or on a team?
I have a mixed doubles partner.
Okay.
That we played today, one to go, and then tomorrow, I have women's stuff.
Okay. So do you know who your partner is tomorrow, or they just do random?
Barbara Wilkinson.
Okay, are you guys good friends?
We're friends.
Yeah.
She's. Um, I'm not really thinking that you're gonna land tomorrow.
Uh, is he, is he not as good?
To me, no.
No.
But, you know, you never know.
Yeah, yeah. You still live on Saint Charles?
I do.
Alright.
Oh, dear God.
So your husband was going back home after he dropped you off?
My husband and, you understand.
So why didn't your husband wanna stay here, does he have something to do tomorrow?
Well, pretty much, we have a ranch.
Oh, okay.
At the Clinton.
Yeah.
And he's going to the ranch. See it. I am upset. You know the thing that upsets me?
What's that?
Is that we really zero in on being safe. I was following him.
Yeah, you were following him, but you weren't inside your lane when you were following him. I don't know if you noticed, but you were in the middle of the road. Did you realize that?
Yes, and when I realized I was in the middle of the road, I moved on.
Yeah.
There's just no leniency here, is there?
Not for me. Alright, I'll be honest, like. I don't, I don't like when people drink and drive because my family's on this roadway just same as yours, and if someone drinks and drives, it's easy that someone can die.
I get that.
So, drinking and driving, I don't, there's.
I get it.
I don't care, I, I don't care if you're my mom or grandma, so.
Because if it were my kids, I'd kill them.
Yeah, same thing, so.
I would.
Like, I tell, I tell everyone, even if my mom drinks and drives, she's going to jail, like, there's no leniency.
Am I going to jail?
Well, that's where you are now, but you're not, you, I don't think you deserve to go sit in a cell all night, so that's why we're gonna have your husband come pick you up.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, but you're technically in jail right now, you're in police custody, we have a.
Alright, so. Is this, how is this gonna impact me and Conway?
That I can't answer that, so, no. I can only, really, I can only answer that if you were a cop, so.
A cop?
Yeah, because I, I know how it would affect me as a cop, if I got it, if I was in your position, so.
I think I'm just asking you, where does this go? I mean, does it?
So like if Conway.
On the news, or we?
No, I mean, if your job, they decide to do a background check randomly, or whatever, then they'll be able to see that you now got arrested for the charges and everything, but if they never do a background check, then I don't tell no one, you don't tell no one, and it's just, now. I'm not sure if you have anyone that doesn't like you or anything, but if they be like, they get wind.
Like in Conway?
Yeah.
Shit, I'm on the school board.
Well, yeah.
There's a lot of people don't like me.
But if they get wind, like, oh, so-and-so got arrested, they could be, they could fool you.
But how do they, how do they know that, how do they?
Word, word gets around, yeah. You know, that one off, that one Jimmy Calvin guy, he gets, he gets wind, everything, you know, so it's.
I know him well.
Oh, do you? I don't know how, I don't know how he figures stuff out, but he gets.
Do I need to call him?
That's up to you, if you want to.
Cause he and I are.
Are you, are you guys friends?
Yes.
Okay.
Type. Oh, Lord.
So with this machine here, when you blow into it, it's gonna get two breath samples from you, okay? So it's gonna take one, read the results, and then wait a minute, and we'll get the second results. It's gonna take the lower of the two. So, if you blow a point one five on the first one, but then a second one, you blow let's just say point one two or whatever, it's gonna take that point one two, and that's gonna be your final results.
And what is the?
Legal limit, point of weight.
I may be in trouble, huh?
Just a little.
Just a little.
Just a little.
Alright.
Right here in just a minute, it's still doing all its checks.
What if I? Come on, help me out.
There's no.
If I breathe in, get a lot of oxygen, not helping.
Uh, nothing will help, nothing sores you up.
There you go.
So. Not, like, a lot of people say coffee sores you up and everything, it, it doesn't.
I know, that's.
Yeah.
You understand, this is first.
Yeah, that's what you told me.
Shit. You know what, though, I did it.
That's the best thing to do. So just like we did out there, you're gonna seal your lips around here on this mouthpiece, and you're just gonna blow into it, okay?
Awesome.
Yep, blow. Blow, 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 up, so.
Dang.
Pull, pull that mouthpiece off.
This?
Straight up, and throw it in that trash can. So you gotta blow harder than that, okay? I know, and, and longer. Hey, don't hit me. I'm sold on an officer.
Are you kidding me, you, you are really kidding me, you know? Come on.
Well, no, you gotta, you gotta blow a little bit harder and a little bit longer.
I'll try.
Okay, just take a deep breath in, and then blow.
I got it.
Just like you did all out there on the road.
I got it.
Alright, I know you said you never blown up a balloon before, but.
I have ne- I have never.
That's crazy to me.
Blown up a balloon.
That's crazy to me. Cause my two girls, every birthday we have, I have to blow up at least, like, at least two hundred balloons.
You understand my kids are fifty-one?
Alright, whenever you're ready, take a deep breath and blow. Blow, 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 blow harder, blow, 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 there you go. Alright, take that mouthpiece off, and throw it in that trash can.
I did better, right?
Yeah, I mean, that one actually took, so you're good.
Alright.
So, we need to get one more, just like that second one. That, the first one didn't go, you didn't blow hard enough, oh, no, you said, yeah, just, I'll probably, it has to read this and all, so. So yeah, that, that first one didn't take because you didn't blow hard enough. So, but that second one did, so you're good, you're good on the second one.
So I got to do another one?
Yeah, here in just a minute, it, it's gonna clear out all that sample to make it fair.
Got it.
That's what it's pretty much doing now.
You like me, don't you?
Well, you're easy, so. Lot better than the last one I got earlier, so.
Who'd you get?
Ah, it's another person, no, another drunk.
I'm just, stop that.
What, he was drunk?
You're calling me a drunk?
No, I mean, you're intoxicated.
I'm not a drunk.
You're not drunk, you're, you're.
I'm not a drunk.
Just, just bad choices tonight.
This is, you know, I'm not gonna offend myself.
No.
But I'm not a drunk.
No, I, I mean, I didn't mean it like that.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for saying like that, but.
That offended.
No, I, I didn't mean it like that.
I know you didn't.
I, I was just kinda like, you guys were both intoxicated. So. His, his was way earlier, though, so.
You like me, though, don't you?
You make, you're not making my, you're not making my job hard, so.
Come on.
You're not making my job hard.
Thank you.
So, I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Some people, some people like to make the job hard, so.
I don't wanna make anything more. I don't wanna make anything more.
Do you go to football games? All of them? You, you gonna go to the one here in Cabot?
Every, no.
Conway versus Con- or Conway versus Cabot?
Absolutely.
Who's gonna win?
Conway.
See, now I don't like.
We have butt dimes. You understand?
No, I, uh, alright, come, come right up here.
We have butt dimes.
Alright, so just like that second one, you're gonna take, take a deep breath and blow into it.
You ready?
Whenever you are. Blow, 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 there you go. I know, take that off. I don't wanna touch it, so.
Wow.
I don't.
Come on.
At least I'm honest.
You think I got something?
I don't touch anything, not even for my kids.
I gotta go to the restroom.
Okay, just have a seat, this is almost done, well, like, give me like two more minutes.
Alright, maybe.
I'll, I'll be able to tell you the results in just half a second. Well, just like two more minutes, okay?
Maybe.
Try not to pee, so.
You know what? It's gonna be all on you if I don't make it.
It's not my pants.
Hey.
So, alright, Linda.
Trying to be really.
Hey, no, no, you're good, so. Alright, having taken the officer's test, you have the right to an additional test, um, to determine alcohol or controlled substance.
I don't, I'm not doing it.
You don't, you don't want additional test at your own expense?
No.
Okay, I, I have, I have to ask.
I'm here.
Just, just like you have to follow law, I gotta follow law, so.
Just telling you.
Alright, so if you're, if you're gonna say no, you're gonna initial by this no right here, on, right there. No, you gotta initial, anyone can do a check mark. I, I can do a simple check mark, you gotta actually initial.
I'm gonna hit you. Alright. You know what?
Perfect, alright, I wanna end that full sentence right here.
You gotta admit. I'm a good person.
You are, just bad choices were made.
Really, tonight, for sure.
Yeah. Alright, I'm gonna have you sign one more thing, okay? So like I said, this is your temporary license, so I'm gonna take your, I'm gonna take your hard copy, okay? I wanna send it to driver control, okay? You understand that?
I do.
Okay.
You don't like it?
No, you don't.
No.
But I, I gotta do, I gotta do it, so.
You don't gotta do anything.
No, I do.
No, you don't.
I do, but I'm gonna give you this copy, okay? And this, this is gonna be your temporary driver's license, alright? On the back here is instructions on how to request a hearing, so if you don't want your license suspended, you're gonna have to follow these instructions, and then this is the form that these instructions are talking about. You're gonna fill this all out, and you're gonna send it to this peel box right here, okay?
Alright, I'm filling this out.
Yep.
Sending it to this.
Yep.
To make that happen.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Easy. And if you do understand that, just your signature and date it right there.
Alright. This is the?
Twenty-fifth.
Eight.
Alright, so at one twenty-four in the morning, your final results was a point one three.
What's that, bad?
Over the legal limit, cause legal. Legal limit's point oh eight.
Really a lot?
Not too much, but it's enough. So explains why you were driving in the middle of the road.
Alright, so stop that, so when I go to a hearing.
For your court date? So your court date will be October ninth, but I'll get, I'll give you that paperwork, so you. Hearing cabinet. Or if you don't wanna show up. If you don't wanna show up and just plead guilty, you can call the courts and let them know that, so you don't have to make a trip all the way back to.
And so what does that do for me?
You just plead guilty and that's it, you start paying on your fine. Now, if you wanna try to fight it, you have to show up and say.
I'm not fighting anything. I mean.
It's your, it's your right, I'm not saying you're guilty or not guilty.
I mean, look at this, there is no guilty here, I'm guilty. And so. I'm not fighting this.
Okay, well then, I'll give you the court's phone number, and you can just call them and be like, hey, I'm guilty, can I just start paying on this fine?
How much is fine?
They don't tell me that much, yeah.
Give me a ballpark.
I have no idea.
Stop that.
They don't tell me a number at all.
Do you think I believe that? That you are a police officer and you have no idea what the fine is?
I just enforce the law, they, they issue the fines and everything over there. Yeah, they could change for everyone.
You're not even gonna give me a ballpark.
They don't tell me the number, I don't know it.
Alright.
Now, I know if you were, if, if I was gonna make you bond, I know how much they make, they want you to pay to bond, but I'm not gonna make you bond. Yeah, I'm gonna let you out of here for free.
Thank you.
You're welcome, so there, that's your copy.
There you go.
You're gonna keep that, okay? You, you soon to use bathroom? Do I know, you, you, do you need to use the bathroom still? Do you need to use the bathroom?
I told you ten minutes ago.
That, it was not ten minutes ago, it was more like two. We're gonna go out here.
When you're seventy six and you need to cover the bathroom?
I, I get it, I get it. Alright, walk this way. And in this black chair right here, this one.
I'm sitting down?
Oh, no, 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 I, I forgot you had to use the bathroom. I'm sorry, it didn't even cross my mind. So. Yeah, i- i- this is the jail, but to flush, you're gonna hit this button right here, okay? Yeah, I'm gonna shut this door, so you have a little bit of privacy. I'm not gonna lock it or anything.
And I hit this right here.
Yep, just push that button in hard, okay? Hey, we'll figure it out.
Got it.
Alright, just have a seat right there. So this is part you're not gonna like, we're gonna have to take a few photos of you and everything like that, so. But we, we don't post ours anywhere, so. What's a good phone number for you? So working on the school board, do you work there every day, or?
Well, I mean, it's. School board is not an everyday thing.
So, so what do you do?
Well, we look at the financial part of the district. We look at.
Do you get paid for it?
Are you a demo- no. Are you a Democrat or Republican?
I'm an independent.
Alright, so let me ask you this. Are you invested in the L B G T Q? Being able to go into classrooms?
Like being, being taught?
Being. Teachers who have L B G T Q, like posters, Black Lives Matter, all that in their classroom.
It could go back and forth, but probably, uh, I mean, I don't think that stuff belongs in the schools.
Well, that's where I am.
Really, yeah.
I, I, I think you have a right to live however you wanna live. And whatever you wanna do with your life, whatever sexuality you want, but you do not have the right. To bring it in to our classroom.
Most definitely.
So that's where I am. I can't believe you haven't seen me on the news.
No, I don't really, I don't really, I'll be honest, I don't really watch the news.
I was, when I got on the school board two years ago, the very first thing we did was tackle. Boys and girls restaurants. And there was a firestorm.
Really?
And if you can understand that, there are a lot of people believe that that should happen. But I'm not one of them. That's not happening. And it's like, well, these transgenders have the right. To go into a girl's restroom if they believe they are girls. Well, my stand is those girls in that restroom have rights to. And. You don't have the right to come in and infringe on their rights.
You're right.
Pretty much where I am. Where is my truck?
It's still at Days Inn. You know, you, you've been, you were quite rude with me the whole time. Your husband was sober enough, he could park it, so.
My husband is, he has had a drink. Not a one.
He, he's kinda the one that made me look at y'all, though, so. Made me look at y'all, because he made this really wide turn coming off by Walmart.
You know, that's interesting, because he said to me standing out there, this is my fault.
I mean, he, he, he's the one that made me like, oh, and then you decided you wanted to drive in the center of the road, so.
I'm really kind of silent how I feel about this.
What do you mean?
I don't know, I mean. We got to Days Inn safe, and I get, I get where you're coming from.
I get it, I mean, I, I, I see your point, but. Still, you're.
I get it. I get it. But, well, you're not bad, I get it. You know, but pretty much. That's why with everything you said before. I like you, but.
I know, yeah.
What does that mean?
People don't really like me because of the position I'm in, so.
But just, that's why with everything you said in front of it.
I never got in this line of field to make friends, so. What's your social?
And that has nothing to do with me having alcohol, because I can.
What, your social?
Remembering.
Oh, no, oh, okay, no, you're good. I, I can't, I can't remember mine either. You're good. If someone asked me right now, I'd be like, I don't know. Give me just one moment. I'm hot. Is this for Ryan? Why is he just staring? You look up soon. Alright, you ready for an exam?
Pardon me?
Ready for an exam?
What kind of exam?
Kid, I'm kidding.
You just get out of here, boy. How old are you?
Twenty three.
Yeah. So what are you doing with those?
They're just gloves, I'm gonna get your fingerprints. I don't, I don't know where your hands have been, so. Everyone gets scared. Alright, we're gonna stand right in front of this blue screen real quick. Get a quick picture of you. Don't hit me, oh, scream.
Don't say don't hit me.
Well, you hit me. You can't hit me.
Look at me. Do you really think I hit you?
Did you not?
Do you really think I hit you? Thank you.
Stand right here, and I'll look towards this camera. Go, go that way, just a little. There, keep on going, keep on going, there you go.
Oh shit, no.
You're good, see? It fixed itself. It, it doesn't go to no one. I mean, it goes to someone, but no, it's not gonna be in the public's view, so you'll be okay. And hopefully, they will never need it, that one person, so, alright.
Like Jimmy Kevin?
Well, he won't get this. This is just, this is just goes to the FBI.
The F B R.
So, put, put both thumbprints together and put it on that plate for me. Oh, wow, alright, here, we're gonna put this lotion on. Yeah, on your hands, now, just open your hands up and rub it in, just like regular lotion, just make sure you get your fingertips really good.
Alright.
Keep on rubbing it in. Because, well, if you don't rub it in.
They're hard to deal with. See, I did it. We doing it again?
Yeah, it's, it's being picky.
I mean, really?
It doesn't take it that small.
That looks pretty good to me. Left, this, left, what?
Not your right. Alright, your right hand, all four fingers, just like this, just your right hand.
Right here?
Just, yeah, just your right hand.
Do you understand I feel like a criminal?
Well, you shouldn't. I mean, you are in jail now, but.
I'm in jail.
Yeah, did you, did you not like our jail cell back there? You didn't? I wouldn't. I'll, I'll make you stay here, I'll, I'll make you go to county.
You, you would not.
I could.
You would not, cause you know I'm a good person.
Be with the real, real people, not go to jail.
Okay, that's crooked.
Hey, you're good.
I'm officially.
Alright, your left hand, all four fingers.
Fingerprints.
Did you not do this as a teacher?
Pardon me?
Did you never do this like as a teacher?
Heaven's no.
How do they, I thought they made y'all do this as a teacher?
You understand I've been retired for fifteen years.
Now, let me see your right hand, lay it flat for me. Bring it up.
What in the world?
Trust me, the FBI wants everything. No matter if. Nah, this is what we do for every single person, so are you able to close fist? See, there's so people can, can peek inside the windows anymore. Nope, your left hand. Bring it down just a little bit.
No.
I'm tired.
Stop. I'm tired too. If you'd let me go, I'd be home.
Oh, no, I, I don't, I don't get to go home for a while. Alright, go ahead and sign in that box, saying those are your fingerprints and no one else's. Alright, let me just have a seat in that chair for me.
Thank you. Oh, my goodness, can we hurry?
We're almost done.
I gotta get up early in the morning.
Waiting for that print, um, I'm gonna go print out your citation, I wanna let my jail staff know that you'll be good to go. Whenever, they, I mean, they typically release you right away, but they'll, they'll decide whenever you go, so. I don't see you staying any, any longer than you have to, though.
Alright, so what are the chances of anybody in Conway, Arkansas knowing about this? Come on.
I haven't, I can't tell you what the chances are or anything.
You can tell me.
I know, I don't tell no one, and if you don't say no one, but there could be someone out there saying, hey, I want. All of our officer Mark's arrest, and then boom, they see your name on there, and so I. Cause anything I do, anyone can get, just like you, you, you know, you work on the school board, so they, they can just fool you. Anything, so. Who's that?
Always looking for that, always.
And like I said, unless you speak about it, or if someone fools it.
I'm not speaking about it at all.
I don't think you would, but. So I don't forget, here's your phone back.
Thank you.
And then here's your pink coffees. And then here's your pink copies, like I said, you remember what to do on that?
I do.
Alright, you know, give me just like, probably two more minutes, I'm gonna go write your citation, what your charges are, and then you, you'll be good to go.
Oh, my goodness.
It won't take me long, so. Just hang tight for me, okay?